Welcome to church, everyone. I hope you're waiting for tonight, because something special is gonna happen. And I pray that all our hearts are prepared for this. Please, if you may, turn to me, at least now, to stand up and pray as well, in the presence of God. If you may, turn to me, it's Psalm chapter 125. As you read, you begin to pray your hearts and mind for what has been done tonight. Verse one. "If you have trust in the Lord, shall be as thou design'd, which cannot be a rule, but I find it forever; as the mountains are round about Jerusalem, so the Lord is round about his people, from henceforth even to our own. For the rod of the wicked shall not rest upon the love of the righteous, lest the righteous put forth their hands unto iniquity. Do good to the Lord unto those that go and be good, unto them that are hard in their hearts. As for far as much, as turned aside unto their wicked ways, the Lord shall lead them forth with the words of eternity, but peace shall be upon Israel." And this night, let's just all be ready to receive something special. What happens tonight in your life really depends upon you. How ready are you, how willing are you to receive God's work? And receive what he's ready to put in store in your life? As I'm standing here, I'm standing before you, and I believe that God is doing something tonight. So, how willing, how ready you are, it's all depending upon you. Let's just begin to pray in the Spirit. "Oriandova, shiakarova, shiakarova. Oriandova, shiandova, shiakarova. You are awesome, Lord Jesus mighty God. There is nobody else like you, mighty God. Out here, there's no one like you, mighty God. Oriandova, shiakarova, shiandova. Oh, Lord, we praise you, oh, we believe, mighty God. For you are good, mighty God. And your mercy and love behind the throne forever, mighty God. Oriandova, shiakarova, shiakarova. Oh, Lord, we praise you, mighty God. For the glory of your word is the Lord's indeed, mighty God. Come on, you can praise him, mighty God. Oriandova, shiakarova, shiandova.
Break through in my spirit, break through in my soul, declare it up! And break through in my struggle, you are the God. You are the God of the break through in my worship, break through. Sing it church! Break through and I live in glory by your name. Break through and I dance, break through and I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the break through in my heart, break through in my mind, break through in my spirit, break through in my soul, break through in my weakness, break through in my struggle, you are the God. You are the God of the break through in my worship, break through in my praise, break through and I live in glory by your name. Break through and I dance, break through and I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the break through in my heart, break through in my spirit, in my soul, in my weakness, in my struggle, you are the God. The break through in my worship, break through in my praise, and break through and I live in glory by your name. Break through and I dance, break through and I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the break through. You are the God. So when I can't, and I really don't know what to do, say I look to you, say break through. Oh, so say stronghold's breaking, so I'm gonna pray with you, you are the God. And you are the God of the break through, you are the God. So when I can't see my, and I really don't know what to do, say I look to you, say break through. Jericho walls are down, every stronghold breaks through. So I'm gonna pray with you, you are the God. You are the God of the break through in my heart, break through in my mind, break through in my spirit, break through in my soul, break through in my struggle, you are the God. You are the God of the break through in my worship, break through and I live in glory by your name. Break through and I dance, break through and I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the break through in my heart, break through in my mind, break through in my spirit, break through in my soul, break through in my weakness, break through in my struggle, you are the God. You are the God of the break through in my worship, break through in my praise, break through and I live in glory by your name. Break through and I dance, break through and I shout, babe. One, two, three, say break through, break through, and break through, and break through. Say break through, say break through. You are the God. You are. In my heart, in my mind, in my spirit, in my soul, in my weakness, in my struggle. Hey, the God of the break through. You are the God of the break. And when I can't, and I really don't know what to do, I look to you, say break through. Walls are down, every stronghold's breaking. So I'm gonna pray with you, you are the God. You are the God. Oh, break through. You are the God of the break through. When I can't see my way through, and I really don't know what to do, I look to you, say break through. Walls are down, every stronghold's breaking. So I'm gonna pray with you. You are the God, you are the God of the break through. Thank you, Jesus. We have a victory in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Praise you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord, that our victory is on our way, Lord. We give you praise, Lord. Thank you, Lord, and we have authority in your name to cast out demons, to cast out any foreign spirit. We have authority in your name, so we give you praise, God, your mighty Lord, your holy Lord, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. I just want you to lift up your voice to him, give him praise, give him glory, Lord. We worship you, your mighty Lord, you're holy, you're worthy to be praised, oh God, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. And bring it all to pass. The storm surrounding me, let it break. At your name, a still call to see the sun. The raging need to see every wave. And let your name, oh Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus. Your silence here, oh Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Call these lungs to sing. Call these lungs to sing once again. While they praise, oh Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Silence here. Oh, Jesus. You'll make the darkness tremble, Jesus. See your silence here. Oh, Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus. Your silence here, oh Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Cause your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. And your name cannot be overcome. And your name is a light forever lifted high. And your name cannot be overcome. Say your name. Your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. And your name cannot be overcome. Say your name, your name, your name is a light forever lifted high. Oh, your name cannot be overcome. Say your name, your name, your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. And your name cannot be overcome. Your name, Jesus, your name is a light forever lifted high. Cause your name cannot be overcome. Oh, Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Your silence here, oh Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Your silence here. Say your name. Your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. And your name cannot be overcome. Say your name, your name, your forever lifted high. Cause your name cannot be overcome. And your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. Your name cannot be overcome. Your name is a light forever lifted high. Your name cannot be overcome. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Your silence here. And Jesus, Jesus. Oh, you make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Cause silence here. Jesus, Jesus. Cause you make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Cause silence here. Cause your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. Cause your name cannot be overcome. And your name is a light forever lifted high. And your name cannot be overcome. Say Jesus. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus. Cause silence here. Jesus, Jesus. Declare it church, declare it. You make the darkness tremble, Jesus, Jesus. Cause silence here. Silence here. Silence here. Next song from the same tales of God's greatness. And as we sing this song, I want us to focus on who he is. I want us to focus on how great he is. I want us to pour out our heart before him. At his feet, at his speech, just like the woman Mary did. She poured it all out at his feet. So I encourage you church, I invite you to let it all out at his feet. Oh, great are you, Lord. 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 Church, sing it out. Say, great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great is our God, hey. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Come on, great are you, Lord. Say, great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. It's your grace. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. You give life. You are alive. You bring life to the dying. You give hope to a storm. Every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. Say you give life. You give hope to a Lord. You bring life. You give hope to a storm. Every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. One more time. You give life. You give hope to a Lord. You bring life. You give hope to a storm. Every heart. Great is our God. Great are you, Lord. Oh, you are great, you are great, you are great. It's your grace, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour. It's your grace. So we pour. Sing it out. It's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour out. We pour it out, we pour it out. Great is our God. In our lungs, so we pour out our praise to you all. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, great are you, great are you, Lord. Let's sing, you give life. Come on church, sing it out. You give life. Declare it, declare it. You give hope to a storm. Every heart. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord, great are you, Lord, great are you, Lord, hey. Great are you, Lord. It's your grace, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour. It's your grace, in our lungs, so we pour. We pour it out, we pour it out. It's your pride, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour out. Yes, we pour out, we pour it out, it's your pride. In our lungs, so we pour out our praise to you all. Lift your voice and worship, worship, hallelujah. Oh yes. Great are you, Lord. Call him by the name you know him. Call him by the name you know him. Great are mighty God. Great are you, Lord, great are you, Lord, great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Say great are you, Lord, great are you, Lord, sing it out. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Oh, great are you, Lord. 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 We will not be tired of worshiping. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. One more time, great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. And all the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. And all the earth, all the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. Woo. And all the earth, all the earth. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. All the earth, all the earth. Come on church, shout it out. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. And all the earth, all the earth. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. Oh, all the earth, all the earth. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry, these bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. It's your grace, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour out our praise to you all. Me, it's your grace. In our lungs, so we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise.
He's worthy, he's worthy. Hallelujah, lift him up higher. So we pour out our praise.
It's your grace, it's your grace.
So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. Come on, pour out. Hallelujah, yes. I must sing the beat of a Lord Jesus Christ. Hallelujah.
It's your grace, it's your grace.
Lift him up higher, magnify him, glorify him. Yes, Father, it's your grace. Glory in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you all. You're great God, my Father. Great are you, Lord. Yes, God, you're great. Come on clap your hand and appreciate the Lord. Open your mouth and declare the glory of God. Come on, you can do better than this, you can do better than this. Open your mouth and drink praise unto the Lord God Almighty. Lift him up higher, magnify him, glorify him. Praise him, hallelujah. That he is worthy, he is worthy, he is worthy. He is great, he is great. Oh, his brand is in your lungs. Oh, you pour on his praise, pour on his praise. Hallelujah, as you praise him. The spiritual realm is shifting away. As you praise him, the power of darkness is speaking away. As you praise him, you prepare your ground. Hallelujah, for God to minister. Praise him, exalt him, glorify him, adore him. That he is worthy, he is worthy, he is worthy. Let all the young praises run. Let all the young praise him. Let all the young praise him, adore him. Those who are bitter and tense, open your mouth and shout in tongues. Open your mouth and speak in tongues. Declare the glory of God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Yes, Father, yes, Father. We exalting you, God, my Father. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Yes, Father, we worship you, God. Oh, hallelujah. It's your prayer to God. In our lungs, you're God, my Father. Oh, Jesus. The glorious presence of God is filling this house. My beloveds, I don't know about you, but I can sense that the only one reason we are here to connect with the Lord. Not with any pastors, not with any worship team. Hallelujah, the music may be the best. The pastor may be well known. But if you are not connecting with God, it all become vain for you, hallelujah. That's why it's important that you remove every distraction. You remove everything that is, hallelujah, distracting you. Connect with him, let your eye be set upon him. Let your eye be looked unto him. That he will make you shine tonight. He will make you shine tonight. He will make you shine. He will in the world in your situation. Hallelujah. Your bondages will be broken. Your bondages will be broken. Your stride will be shifting. In a good atmosphere, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Greater you, God, greater you, God. Yes, Father, you are greater, you are greater. You're greater than no problem. You're greater than no bondages. You're greater than any other report. You're greater, you're greater. You're greater, God, my Father. Yes, yes, yes. Fill with the Holy Ghost's fire. Fill with the glory. Fill, fill. Let it flow, let it flow. Let it burst out into the nation. Let it burst out into the city. Let it burst out into your neighborhood. In the name of Jesus, hallelujah. Yes, God, you for a greater purpose. Yes, Father, yes, Father. We thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. May God bless this meeting. May God continue to lead us in a glorious and amazing way. May God use us servant of God in a greater level, hallelujah. Let it be a blessing to the nation, not inside this building, hallelujah. May our pastor God's will come on the stage and lead us in prayer and praise. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. You are the almighty God. You are the creator of the universe. You are the father of our Lord Jesus Christ. You are great and mighty God. We bow down before you. We join the hosts of heaven. We join the host of heaven to say that you are our God. You are our maker. You are our creator. You are the reason why we are here. Jesus, you are our Savior. You are our redeemer. You are our healer. You are our helper. Father, we bless you. We thank you for such a glorious fellowship, our God. We bless you. There is none like unto you. We join the host of heaven to bow down before you, to give you the honor that is due for you. Blessed be your holy name. God, in this meeting, we decree that your presence will continue. We decree for greatly raha'ah. We decree for the unshone of your Holy Spirit. We decree for the direction of your Holy Spirit. We decree for the wonderful potential of the practical talisman in our midst. Father, we bring your servant, your God, before you. Use him as never before. Use him to pour out that which you have prepared for us, so that at the end of this meeting, we say of a truth. The Lord has spoken to us. We stand in the name of Jesus to kick away every distraction, every distracting spirit. We reject them. In the name of Jesus, we decree and declare, we will never leave this house as we came. There will be transformation. There will be healing. There will be God visitation upon each and every one of us, upon our families, upon this family of Pilisra of Jesus. So shall it be, in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. Oh, God Almighty, hallelujah! Amen. Amen. You may be seated now. Hallelujah! Amen. And all the earth shall raise praise. Hallelujah! He is greater. Amen? I mean, come on, touch your neighbor and say, "Good to see you," in the house of God. And tell the same neighbor, "It's for something greater." Not a normal... Come on, say it out. It's for something greater. Hallelujah! Amen? The reason I, you know, I'm telling you to be expectation. Sometimes we believers, we miss God's touch. This morning, we had two people just came up. Two local Irish people just came up. One person or sisters, they brought him, helped him to... He had a stick to walk, but they helped him to carry his bag, and he came up. And another person just was looking at the door. Then I went out and I was inviting him for five minutes, and he was there almost a service. And you ought to see the way they worshiped God. The person who came with the stick, he was with the tears while the worship going on. And he was crying and telling me, "Oh, something happening over my body." He said, he's not a believer. He said, "I came with a complete pain in my stomach. I can feel no more the pain in my stomach." We believers are so much smart that we don't become innocent to connect our God. That's what the Bible says. Unless you become like a small baby, you cannot enter into the kingdom of God. It's not about the heaven. Experiencing the kingdom of God, we need humbleness. We need to remove every distraction. So be in that attitude tonight. And we have a meeting arranged tomorrow morning, 10:30. Tomorrow evening, 7 o'clock. Then Sunday morning, there is two people taking water baptism. Two are medical doctors, young boys. They given their life for the Lord. And with that, we are going to have a communion also. Then Sunday evening is a big celebration evening. Hallelujah! Ministry of Jesus is going to celebrate the 10th year, God's faithfulness, God's goodness. Hallelujah! I really, I would really encourage you to be prayer and don't miss any meetings. If you miss any single meeting, you're missing something greater blessing. I know your body will say you're tired. You know what time we be all left from here today? 4:00. The meeting is scheduled for, you know, to finish at 1:00, but the meeting finished almost close to 3:00. The God used the servant of God so mightly, revealed so many things, touched every single one. He prayed for every single one, took time and anointed them with oil. So tomorrow morning, pastor will explain you. Apostle Sam will explain you also, but he requested me, if anybody want for him to anoint the oil, bring, you know, a bottle of olive oil, that he can bless that, and he can use it when the devil is trying to enter into your territory. Hallelujah! That he will trample before the anointing that you are carrying in Jesus' name. Amen. And his request is, if possible, everybody must fast and come tomorrow. There's a great test impatience is going to take place tomorrow. Hallelujah! Amen. So tomorrow, what time is the meeting? 10:30. At what time you need to be here? Not 11:00, 11:30? No. Prayer team, you need to dedicate. Tomorrow is going to be a marvelous day, so come and pray before the meeting. Amen? So, amen, let us prepare ourselves. Amen. Now we're going to take our offering. This offering, you know, we're going to support towards the servants of God. They're dedicated. It's not easy to come, paying everything, but they didn't demand anything. But let's show our gratitude. Amen? So the way you sow the seed, the Lord will be honored. Hallelujah! You will receive it. Amen? So this is a time that we can take our offering. Amen? For blessing towards the kingdom of God. Amen? So we all stand. We're going to sing a song, preparing ourselves towards God's word. Hallelujah! While you watch, the choir is going to lead you to the song. You are preparing your heart as you give the offering. Ask the Lord, "Lord, touch me today. Lord, encounter me today. Lord, heal me. Speak to me." Let that be your prayer. Amen? Let that be your attitude. And with that, you sing this song and prepare yourself. Hallelujah!
There shall be showers of blessing. This is the promise of God. There shall be seasons with refreshing sent from the Savior above. Showers of blessing. Showers of blessing we give. Mercy drops round us are falling, but for the showers we plead. There shall be showers of blessing. This is the promise of God. There shall be seasons with refreshing sent from the Savior above. Showers of blessing. Showers of blessing we give. Mercy comes round us are falling, but for the showers we plead. There shall be showers of blessing. All that today they might fall. Now us to God we're confessing. Now us on Jesus we call. Showers of blessing. Showers of blessing we give. Mercy drops round us are falling, but for the showers we plead.
Showers of blessing.
Showers of blessing. Showers of blessing we give. Mercy drops round us are falling, but for the showers we plead. Mercy drops round us are falling, but for the showers we plead.
Amen, amen, amen. How many people are excited tonight? Okay, two people. I said, how many people are excited tonight? Now, you can do better than me because I've been shouting and screaming for the last couple of days, and my voice is on the mens right now, but we are excited about Jesus, right, J.J.? Yes, amen. Amen, amen. Father, we're so grateful. We're so thankful for all that you do and all that you are. And Father, we thank you for each person that's contributed and sown into your kingdom. They've sown into the anointing upon this house. And I thank you that, Father, it will be multiplied exponentially back to them, to their point of need, even beyond what they've been standing for, believing for. You're going to do things that they could never have dreamt of or imagined, Lord. And I thank you that anointing for multiplication is in this house. And I thank you that even if it's 1 euro, 1 dollar, 1 whatever it is, it's going to be multiplied many times over. And we're going to see souls come into this house. We're going to see the kingdom built up. We're going to see the community fed. And we're going to see needs met in the name of Jesus. And we want to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise ahead of time because you are worthy of it, Lord. You are worthy of it all. For from you are all things, and to you are all things. You deserve the glory and the honor and the praise and the majesty and the victory in Jesus' name and the church says. Amen! Woo! Come on, give Jesus a big shout. Amen. As the worship team transitions here, I just want to thank each of you for making it tonight. And on behalf of Pastor Jay Seelin and Sister Malika, thank you. I mean, we have people all the way from London, England, who flew in last night to be a part of this meeting. Amen. It's because they love Jesus. They love this house, and they love everything that God is doing. Then we've got people all around Ireland that have come in, all the way from Waterford. Who, who, who's driven the farthest here tonight? Two hours? Anybody? Two hours back? Is that you? Did you say? Somebody? Raise your hand. Come on, don't be shy. Two hours. There's others who have come in from further distances. We just want to thank you because God is going to meet you. And God, I mean, this place was wrecked this morning. We had people all over the floor. The glory just filled this place. And I have the privilege and the honor tonight of introducing my spiritual father. I've known him since I was a teenager, when I gave my life to the Lord. Well, I should say, when I got wrecked by the Lord when I was 18 years old. I gave my life when I was eight, but I got wrecked when I was 18. And God connected Pastor Apostle Sam Darla into my life. And we used to meet in a little basement. Well, it wasn't a little basement. It was a decent-sized basement in Medina, Illinois. And we were connected since I was 18 years old. I won't tell you how old I am now. But it's been a long time. And then the Lord reconnected us again recently, and he's played such an instrumental part of my wife and my, and my children's lives over the last couple of years. And some critical decisions that we had to make over the recent year was in part because the Lord sent him to Dallas and to speak to us and say, "It's time." And we made those decisions, and our life has never been the same. And I'm honored to call him a spiritual father. There's, we live in a generation where there's a lot of children and not many fathers. And I have an earthly father who's amazing. But to have a spiritual father that will call me and tell me, "John, you need to do this." Yes. Yes. And you have a spiritual father here, too. Come on! He told me something, you know, about a month ago. He said, "John, you need to bring such-and-such mic when you go to Ireland." And there are reasons why I'm telling you that. And for whatever reason, I was just looking for the right price, looking for the right item, and time went by and I didn't do it. And I think a couple of days before, he asked me, "Hey, did you get that microphone?" I said, "You know what? I, I didn't." And I felt so bad because I knew I hurt my father. And that's the kind of relationship we have as a father and a son. They edify. They bring correction. But you know what? I know my wife and I and my kids are covered in prayer. This man ministers to hundreds of thousands of people all around the world. But he'll take that moment to call us and to make sure we're doing okay. This is a man that I've seen the love of Jesus just flow out of. And I want to be more like Jesus. So when I look at him, I see Jesus. And when I see Jesus, I see my daddy God in heaven. Amen? So I want to introduce my spiritual father. But before I have him come up, Rebecca or Rachel and Rebecca, y'all got switched. His daughters are here with us, and they're going to lead us into a moment of worship. And last night, we talked about finding ourselves at the feet of Jesus. Tonight, I'm asking you, with every head bowed and every eye closed, would you go to the feet of Jesus as they sing? And the servant of God is going to come up and minister to you. But more than seeing him, I want you to see our precious Savior. I want you to see those nail-scarred hands and feet. And he's going to minister out of that place. And I believe you're going to leave here changed and wrecked. You're going to get touched, and you're never going to be the same again. Amen?
I praise you. I adore you. I honor you. We honor you. We exalt you, Lord! There is no one like your Father. Father, I have been crucified with Christ. No longer I live. The life that I'm living right now, only by faith in the name of Jesus. None of me and all of you. Holy Spirit, have your way. Reveal Jesus to us more and more, more and more, more and more. Holy Spirit, partner with me tonight. I continue to bind every demonic interference, every demonic destruction, every demonic disturbance. I cover everybody's mind with the precious blood of Jesus. I prophesy there will be miracles tonight. There'll be breakthrough tonight. There'll be healings tonight. There will be revelation tonight. There'll be a fire tonight! Thank you, Lord, for this ministry. Thank you, Lord, for your Son. Thank you, Lord, for every precious body in the sanctuary. We come at this meeting this time in your mighty name. In Jesus' mighty name, everybody said? Come on, one time. Come on, give the Lord big praise. Uram Abashan, please be seated. Please be seated. Hallelujah. Thank you. Ethan, can you continue on the piano? Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. We worship you. Hallelujah. I want all of you to say this word. Word explosion. Something is about to explode tonight. That something is God's word. Somebody say, "God's word." When God's word explodes inside of us, sickness will disappear. Anything that is hindering our life for a long time will disappear. Amen? Say with me. There is a word explosion in my spirit that will travel to my soul. And I will experience the glory of God. In fact, I'm more than a conqueror. I'm victorious. I can do all things through Christ, who strengthens me. Come on, somebody. Hallelujah! Every other book informs, but God's word transforms. My father is to say, we wanna talk about word and faith. Tomorrow, as the Lord gives us, we're gonna talk about the anointing and the glory. Amen? Lot of importations. Today, we're gonna talk a little bit of faith. But I wanna talk about word first because faith is the byproduct of God's word. Amen? Faith comes through the word of God. Hallelujah. So, as the Lord leads us, so what is in the word? Many things we're gonna see today. Then, as the Lord leads us, if I have time, we go into the faith. Then we go into anointing. Then we go into glory. Are you excited? Are you excited? Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. So, my father is to say, if you have faith with you, he said, "Faith will give you a place in any nation." You heard me, right? Lord took me so far, 71 nations. I still wanna travel. But father is to say, age, I was only 14 years old in the church. I was actually by the soundboard back then, different technology. I was just ministering, helping. My father suddenly comes, lays hands on me. He said, "Son, you will travel around the world, preach the word." And I play music. I'm a musician. I used to work in the movie field in India. I wrote music for the movies. I did a lot of stuff. I play lots of instruments, write music. And he said, "Through guitar, you will travel the world." Truly speaking, because of guitar, I was given a chance to travel around the world. That's the first opening. Hallelujah. Many people don't know, I had no teacher for me in music. You know who taught me? Holy Spirit. Holy Spirit. I made a decision when I was young, when I... One day, you know, I learned from, one day I'll talk about that, how God gave me the gift. I never taught my children either. All three children play music. It's in the bloodline. Come on. Generational blessings, generational curse are in the bloodline. You will like it or not, they will show up someday. Somebody say, "I am blessed." I am blessed beyond measure. My father walked, my father lived by the word, Jash shall live by faith. When we were young, we didn't understand what he was doing. He showed us practically God's word. Now, let me tell you. When I became a teenager, when I got saved, everything that he possessed start to show up inside me. Slowly, as I start to commit myself, start to show up over me. Come on, somebody. I prophesy that will be your story. Parents, that will be your story. And my father said, "Faith will give you a place in any nation." My father is to say, "Faith will connect humanity to divinity." Hallelujah! All of a sudden, you have the ability of God inside you. I prophesy to all of you. Lift up your hands. Come on, come on, come on. Such a Holy Spirit. My goodness, the cloud here. Uram Abashan, there are release and importation of faith. Thank you, Jesus. Abrahamic faith in the name of Jesus. I pray that, Father God, everybody sitting here, Lord, today, this moment right now, this faith will not stop right here. It will go to generations after generations of Father God. Hallelujah. Thank you. Receive it. Receive it. Well, in order to have faith, we need word. Faith comes by hearing. Hearing by the word of God. So let's, let's talk a little bit about the word, okay? Amen? Hallelujah. Somebody say, "Amen?" You gotta make me excited. Come on, come on, come on, come on. So what is in the word? If you have a pen and paper, write it down. I wanna give some thoughts, some points, a little teaching. What is in the word? Title of the sermon is "Word Explosion." Somebody, can you say it like it is? Want to go? Word explosion. You know, when the word explodes inside you, cancer disappears. Come on, somebody. How do I know that? Well, word is Jesus. Hallelujah. In the beginning, John's Gospel, chapter 1, what's one says, "In the beginning..." Everybody repeat after me. "In the beginning was the word. Word was with God, and the word was God." Hallelujah! "That word became flesh and dwelt among us." That word is now is inside you. Oh, John, 1 John 4:4 says, "Greater is he that is in you." Come on, somebody. That Jesus is where now? Uh-uh, come on, come on. I wanna hear this. That Jesus where now? Pastor, thank you. Let me see this. Where is that Jesus now? Hallelujah. Who is Jesus? The word. Somebody say, "Who is Jesus?" The word. So I have word inside me. You know what happens when this word can explode? When the fire comes on the word. Oh, come on, somebody. You're a dynamite. Ah-ha. You are a terror to the devil. You know, every day, when you get up from your bed, devil needs to run away from you. Let me tell you, not run away from you. Devil should run away from your city altogether. Come on, somebody. Hallelujah! Proverbs 11:11 says, Proverbs 11:11 says, "By the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted. But it is overthrown by the mouth of the wicked." God's children, if you speak the word with anointing, not only changes your location, it changes your city. That's why in the Gospels, right? They said, when they heard about disciples coming to the town, "Oh, boy, these guys are coming here too." Come on, somebody. Hallelujah! Devil should say, "Oh, so-and-so brother is coming to this area. Oh, boy." Demons literally run away. I was in Sydney, Australia, 2013. I just stepped down. Always do this. Suddenly, God tells me. I put my, you know, feet in certain location. And I stand there. I start to decree and declare. Lord shows me through spiritual eyesight. Come on, somebody. You like to see the supernatural? Without that, I cannot live. Because see, before, I was confused. I used to guess, maybe God is there. Maybe he's gonna give me victory. Maybe things gonna work out for me. But when I start to see things in the spiritual, I know exactly what's gonna happen. Oh, come on, somebody. If I see a demonic spirit hindering something in my life, I know how to take care of him. That's why we need to walk in the spirit. Where is the spirit now? John's Gospel, chapter 6, verse 63. "The words I speak unto you, they're spirit." So, word is Jesus. Come on. Where is the spirit now? In the word. If I have the word, and that is anointed word, what I have? I have truth. God's word is truth. That is Jesus. I have the spirit. When I speak it, there will be an explosion. Somebody say, "Come on, come on." Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. You know why I say, Galatians, chapter 2, verse 20, "I have been crucified with Christ"? I'm really scared when I come to the pulpit here. I'm really scared that my flesh will, flesh will come in the way of God's word. I have to make it. I have to say it. I have to crucify my body. Come on, everybody say with me. "I have been crucified with Christ. No longer I live. The life that I'm living right now, I live, I live by faith in the name of Jesus." Hallelujah! Come on, somebody. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Who are you now? Spirit. Flesh cannot stop anything. So let me take you back. So, are you receiving it? Come on, come on, come on. Today, God is gonna open somebody's eyes. Spiritual eyes. Psalm 119, verse 19. What is in the word? Answer is 119:18. "Open my eyes to see, that I may see wondrous things from your word." Allah, same thing. So, wonderful things, where are they located right now? Come on. Come on. Where is the word? Ah-ha. Oh, come on, some, I need some confidence here. Come on. Where is that word right now? Where is your wonder, miracle, breakthrough, healing? Come on, come on, revelation. Where is it now? Inside you? Who is responsible to bring them out of you? Ah, come on. Come on, this is the time. Give the Lord big praise. People say, "Lord, I need a miracle." God says, "Come on, son. I wanna see that miracle." Lord, change the situation. God says, "Son, you change it." Somebody say, "I'm an agent of change." Hallelujah. Say with me, "I'm a miracle worker." "I'm a grace teacher." "I'm a peacemaker." "All of God and all of God's power is inside me." Hallelujah. So what is in the word? Number one, write it down, please. Thank you, Lord. Then I talk about the future of the church. Number one, there is power. Or you can write this way. God's word carries the power of God. God's word, say with me. God's word carries power of God. What word is this? Rema word. See, there is a logos word. I also studied very well. I got lots of degrees too. But that gave me a knowledge. That gave me pride. The Lord said to me in 2009, "Put all the theological dignities aside." My father is to tell us all the time, "I'm not against theology, but, son, children, you need neology." Somebody say, "Neology?" Somebody get, say it louder. Neology. Theology is good. I'm not against it. But neology is more important. And suddenly, God start to speak to me, Isaiah 60, what's one onwards. He said, "Sam Darla, come on, rise. Arise and shine. The light has come upon you." Well, he's inside me, but I have no revelation of it. I did everything in the ministry for 10 years with my own strength. Yes, in the natural, I got everything that I need, but no satisfaction. That day, my life changed. Today, somebody's life is changing. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. So number one, God's word carries God's power. Why devil is after God's children not to study the word? Come on, why? Especially why devil never want you to be under anointed man of God and anointed woman of God? When we take the logos word through anointing, we speak it, that becomes Rema word. Hallelujah! You know, when I was very young... You know, when I was very young, in this healing and miracle breakthrough ministry, two thousand nine only, it's, my father, you know, moved in the spirit big time. My sister, my, my mother, prophetic and healings and miracles and all the breakthrough supernatural, but I didn't. I was just watching. Two thousand nine, God touched me. When I was in this supernatural ministry, he, he's my teacher. He taught me. And I used to notice thirty-five years, this man did not walk. Thirty, thirty-two years, he did not walk. Under the anointing, I say, I say, Bob, walk now. He walks. How is it possible? Something happened, something is happening. Something exploded. Can you remind me, John, tomorrow? Call David and get all the videos, some videos we can play here, at least. I, he came for a wedding. I just did a wedding for somebody. He came for a wedding. The groom tells me, Pastor, since he came to our church, can you lay hands on him? He didn't walk for thirty-two years. He came with crutches. I said, we will do it. Amen? Why? I know what I possess. Come on, somebody. Come on, everybody put your hand right here. Say, I know what I possess. I know what I have. Through the anointing of the Holy Spirit, in the name of Jesus, through the leading of the spirit, I will say what God says. Hallelujah. Every child of the Most High God, we are copycats. You know that? God said, imitate me. In order to imitate God's word, holiness is a very important thing. People think, I'm under grace. I'm, you're under grace, my dear, I understand. You cannot carry power. What you have, you cannot carry it. Hallelujah. Somebody say righteousness. Righteousness produces holiness. The fruit of righteousness is holiness. You cannot be holy automatically. If I practice righteousness. What is righteousness? Right standing with God. Who is God here now? Come on. The word of God. Come on, somebody. If I stand according to God's word. Come on. God said, don't do that. God said it, I won't do it. God said, do it. I do it. I have a right standing with God's word. That means I'm standing right with God. Now, I can say, I'm holy. Somebody say, I'm holy inside. But I have to be holy here now. You know, God says, God is holy, it's all in the Bible. God is holy, be holy. Why did God say that? Come on. God will never say anything that he cannot, he can do already. What he cannot do? In other words, let me say, somebody say, there is my part and God's part. Hallelujah. I have a part to play. Spirit, he sanctified me. He declared me righteous. He gave me salvation. He said, I'm righteous, I'm holy, I'm anointed, the glory of God inside me. Now he says, it is your duty now. What I have deposited in your spirit, now you have to take it into your soul. Soul is a culprit, you know that, right? Once our soul is sanctified, wow. What is right here cannot hide any longer. Your shadow can heal people. Come on, somebody. One word from you. The girl didn't have a job for eighteen years. IT, no touch. But the family was in a desperate situation financially. I just cannot say a word unless God says a word. As the Lord, I should say, just say, daughter, you'll get job next week. Huh? How can I say that? Samdala has no authority, but Jesus has all the authority. See, those who are led by the spirit of God, sons and daughters of God, his sheep can hear. Somebody here, his sheep, any, any, any of his sheep here, come on. Let me see your hands. Are you his sheep? Are you his sheep? Come on, come on, somebody. Come on, come on, are you his sheep? My Lord is my shepherd. If I'm his sheep, I can hear his voice. Voice of God is in the word of God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. So God's word carries the power of God. So I learned in two thousand nine, my goodness, wow. I have to use this word more. How many like to use God's word more? This morning, we talked about, there is depth and life in the power of the tongue. Who is this? Born-again believer. Because your spirit carries God's power. Let me, let me move on. Number one, number one, number one. We, God's word carries what again? God's power. John six eighty-three, just, just write it down. I just wanna go far, go far really fast, then I want to lay hands on again. Amen? Okay, let me read. "It is the spirit who gives life; the flesh profits nothing. The words that I speak to you are spirit, and they are life." Amen? Somebody shout amen? Hallelujah. Now, Book of Acts, chapter one, verse eight. Book of Acts, chapter one, verse eight says, "But you shall receive power, when the Holy Spirit has come upon you, and you shall be witnesses to me in Jerusalem, in Judea, and all..." Somebody, "And to the end of this earth." Come on, somebody. So now, if I have the power of God, that means, so, think about this right now. Everybody say with me, I have the word. That means I have power of God. Say it again. Since I have the word of God inside me, I possess power of God. In the name of Jesus, through the authority of Jesus, I can say what God tells me. And I will see what God said I will see. Hallelujah. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Can you prophesy? Can you prophesy yourself, or yourself right now? Can you take a moment? Prophesy. Come on, come on, come on. Just prophesy. Whatever you wanna, wanna see manifest in your life. Prophesy something. Come on, say, prophecy is, there are prophetic ministry, office of the prophet. I would not talking about that. Decree. Bible says, Job, chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-eight. "You shall decree things, so shall it be established for you." Decree. There are three types of anointing. Say with me, three types of anointing. What is it? Priestly anointing. Prophetic anointing. Kingsly anointing. Hallelujah. Say with me again. I'm a priest. I'm a prophet. I'm a king. Lot of believers all, wonderful priests. Priestly ministry is prayer ministry in the New Testament. You are prayer warriors. You intercede, you fast, all good. But from prayer ministry, which is a priestly ministry, very important, the step one, you cannot remove that, that's the step one. Just like we were talking about, uh, this morning, faith, anointing, and the glory. Same way. If I am a priest, I'm a prayer warrior, praise Jesus. God bless you, prayer warriors. God bless you, intercessives. God bless you. But don't stop there. Move into the prophetic. Come on. Hallelujah. You wanna be right here, you wanna go here? Well, you are through prayer, through prayer. You know what, what's happening? Priest maintains his life. Yes or no? Priest maintains. Because in the Old Covenant, Old Testament, Old Covenant, priest had sinned. The moment he goes into the place holy of holies, what happens? Praise God. Who is a priest here? Should I call somebody and say priest? Or everybody is a priest? Say with me, every born-again believer is a priest. I'm a priest. Come on, somebody. I'm a priest. It is my responsibility to maintain holiness. See, you get it, what I'm trying to say? If you don't, if I don't maintain holiness, my prayer is waste. Some people pray without holiness. I'm under grace. No use, my dear. Of course, you're under grace. Nothing will happen. Prayer of a righteous man is so powerful. Amen? So let me say, let me say quickly. Come on, somebody, give me, give the Lord big praise one more time. Can you please? Priest. Say with me, I'm a priest. I'm a priest. So this is priest ministry. And the Lord says, my son, my daughter, you've been talking to me. Somebody say, I'm talking to God through prayer, yes? How many like to hear his voice then? Lot of people, they go, God, give me that, give me this. Bless them, so many things, you know, one way. In Jesus' name, amen? By God, I gotta get to work. Oh, they allowed three hours to pray. Father, I just give you praise, I give you glory, they kneel down, you know? My father taught us a lot of kneeling down. I can, lot of callous here, I can kneel down. We pray, 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 pray. We don't let God speak one word. I'm sorry, God, I'm too spiritual. I wanna tell you what I wanna tell you. There are lot of pastors and ministers and children of God, wonderful people, nothing wrong. They just talk to God, but they won't give him a time to talk to them. Prayer and prophetic understanding, which is prophetic ministry, very important. When you didn't hear from God, your prayer ministry is not successful. You wasted your time. I'm not trying to put anybody down here. We are going to the next level. I said, Pastor Jason and Pastor, what are you expecting? Pastor, we're expecting to go to the next level now. Come on, as a church together. We want to go from glory to glory. I just wanna push you there. There are some time, we just had to wait in the presence of the Lord. Don't say a word. Those who wait on the Lord will renew. You know how you know your prayer is so powerful? You won't get off of the prayer, you know, four, three hours of prayer. Man, my knees are hurting. I can't get, I can't. Is that really true? That's a good prayer? If you and I wait on the Lord, those who wait on the Lord will renew. Spiritual, mental, physical, financial. Oh, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. All of that. You know, when you wait on the Lord, that means, see, you told him what your problem is. You told God everything. In the New Covenant, you don't even ask God for any needs. You may intercede for a nation. You may intercede for people. You never say, Lord, I need a job. You never say, why? God already given you. Bible says, everything is given to us. How many understanding this? Come on. If somebody is still praying, Lord, give me money, give me a job, that means you don't have the revelation, understand? You're not understanding. It is already given to you. Ephesians, chapter one, verse three, he has given us everything. Are we moving forward? Come on, somebody. Hallelujah. So I am a priest, yes, I'm a prayer warrior, but I have to wait on the Lord to hear his voice. I presented my case. Daniel was waiting on the Lord. The moment he start praying, inquiring about things, God sent Gabriel already with a message. Yes or no? But there was a hindrance. That's not our, we're not talking about that topic. But I'm just saying, as a man of God, woman of God, as you start to pray about things, God releases an angel messenger to you. That is prophetic ministry. Lord raised prophets in this church. Why I'm saying that? We just said, everybody is a prophet. God said to me, Isaiah sixty, verse one, "I already know the glory of the Lord is upon me, but I didn't act." He said, Samdala, arise and shine, the light has come upon you, my son. It's been there inside your spirit. Come on, use it. Somebody say, I'm a prophet. I had to learn to wait. We like to wait on people, not on God. Let's repent of that. Amen? So first is a priestly ministry. Somebody say, priestly ministry. Then prophetic ministry. When I said hello to Daddy God, he said, hello, son. Hello, daughter. That is prophetic ministry. If you didn't hear back from him, there is something wrong somewhere. From this day forward, from this moment onwards, you will say hello to Daddy God, he will say hello back to you. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. He will say hello, my son. Hello, my daughter. And you know what? Let me say, let me, let me clear it up. So first, priestly ministry, I am prayer warrior. I went to God with a problem. My father came. He said, he gave me a solution. Son, this is the solution. Daughter, this is the solution. So you are a priest, and you are a good prophet now. You got the understanding. What we're supposed to do next? Come on. God gave you a solution. Tell me, what you're supposed to do next? John, tell me, you already know. Kingsly anointing. So God, you presented your case, your problem, please. Very important to understand this. You, you, you present your case, your situation, whatever that is. You took it to God. And the Lord said, this is how you gotta do it. And some people say, Lord, why can't you do it? Bible says, he gave you and me authority. Come on. Hallelujah. Luke, chapter ten, verse eighteen and nineteen. I am, I have given you the power. Come on, somebody. Matthew, chapter sixteen, verse nineteen. I have given you the power to whatever you bind on earth. Come on. Who has the power now? How? Because I possess him. Come on. Hallelujah, come on, give the shout of praise. Come on, come on. So you understand now? So who is delaying your miracle now? Me. I'm not acting, I'm not praying right. So first, I'm a priest. Then I'm a prophet. If I don't act as king with a kingsly anointing, if I don't decree and declare, nothing will happen. As I learned, I prayed for one person, he went to be the Lord. I prayed. I got the understanding. This young man, only thirty-six, throat cancer. I could not save him. This is two thousand eight, two thousand nine. I prayed. I fasted. I did everything I could. There was a prophetic understanding. God told me exactly what is wrong. But I never use kingsly anointing. I said to God, Lord, please, I called more believers. Fifty-plus believers start to kneel down and pray hours and hours. Lord, this young man should not die. Probably more than seven days, we didn't eat food. We are saying, God, you change, you heal him. Bible says, Lord did mighty things through whose hand? Through hands of Paul. You with me now? We gotta change our thinking. I am the reason why my city is like that. I am the reason why my family is like that. I'm not saying that you're gonna blame yourself and be in guilt, no, 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 no. Take authority. Hallelujah, come on, somebody. Somebody say, I'm an agent of change. I could not save him. I could not save him. That's the time Lord talked to me. By the grace of God, I have no idea how many hundreds of cancers now gone. God sees your heart, you have a compassion. You know, this afternoon, I am dreaming, I only had, I slept one hour forty minutes this afternoon. I didn't sleep for one and a day so far. And in that dream, God visits me and tells me, son, I am putting this anointing also on you today. This is happened this, this afternoon. Because I see your compassionate heart. Something I didn't have. You may think that we all have all the anointings that we need, no, 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 God places certain anointings upon you. That's why there is no competition in the body of Christ, only a cooperation. Each one is different, we are together, we're gonna change the world, amen. Come on, we're gonna change the world. If there's a competition, that's demonic, hallelujah. So say with me, I'm a priest. And I'm a prophet. I will operate in the kingly anointing. From this day forward, from this moment onwards, whatever I decree and declare, that will happen. You believe that, come on, you believe that, come on, come on, come on, come on. One lady, he used to walk for a long, long, long time, maybe ten, fifteen years with a cane. She's our member. And she used to come to our church, she heard about me, she came, and I pray, and she throws that cane. She's a very tall and strong woman, and she walks very nicely. She goes back home, she lives in apartment. Three weeks are okay, four weeks are okay, then suddenly devil start to speak to her. If you go without a cane today downstairs, you will fall. She was a medical nurse, you will break. And your life will be miserable, you better take the cane. She's perfect. But now the moment she takes the cane, am I saying right cane, right? Yeah? Suddenly, she cannot walk. She used to stand like this, now she bends again. Hallelujah. And she comes to church again. All church members clapped, you know, twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, this happened. Sister so-and-so, I'm mentioning, I'm not mentioning her name. In a sense, so she gave a testimony, she's walking and jumping, I make her run, you know, all those things we do. Excited. Again, she comes from her car, like this. All the believers, they see, they see her. What happens when you, when somebody got a miracle, and they're so excited for four weeks, and the fifth week, they got the same problem? Those of you watching, what happens to your faith now? Are with me now? That is demonic, you know that? But who gave the chance to enemy to, to mess up her mind? She did. Why? Can I tell you some secret? She's weak spiritually. She was born again thirty-three years ago. But she is a baby in the Lord. I'm gonna ask you a question, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand if you are a baby Christian, okay? How many baby Christians are here? I know you will never raise your hand, I know for sure. Come on, the moment you don't raise your hand, you already matured now, hallelujah. Somebody say, I'm matured Christian now. I know the tricks of the devil. I will not give room. Ephesians chapter 4, verse 26 says, do not give the enemy foothold. Twenty-six to twenty-seven, amen, you know, so devil has no power over me, come on, somebody. Unless I give him. Devil brings worry. So she came to prayer, I laid hands on her, again she gets healed, why? The anointing is all over me, the moment I touch her, cane goes away again, she runs again. This happened more than six times. Wow. Then I sat with her. What happened sister? Pastor devil comes like a monkey in my head, literally showed me, she showed me like a monkey. Right here, tells me, you're gonna break your leg, you'll be a vegetable. I had to deliver her from the demonic spirit in the head. See, I can pray for the healing, anointing can heal, but if I don't help her in the soul, mind, that enemy will come back. Why I'm saying this, to tell you. Anointing can heal people, praise Jesus. But you have to understand, there are times you need to operate in the kingly anointing. And that dear sister right now, completely lost her weight, she is tall. I actually told her to give the cane, I took it. See, I'm very smart now. She has no cane in the house. Devil can say whatever he want. Hallelujah, come on, somebody. Do not give the devil a chance. And we're trying to put our old videos and new videos together, she is totally beautiful now, they're totally different now. And she had diabetic problem, diabetes, blood pressure, you name it. Today, I mean, again, I'm not against doctors and medicine. Her faith is so amazing. By the grace of God, today she doesn't take any medication, completely here. Completely here. Completely here. Hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord, come on. Hallelujah, how much time I got pastor? Little more time, right, just a little time. Hallelujah, somebody shout amen. Number two, number two. Or number one, let's carry number one. One more scripture, I love this, I want this to happen to all of us. Book of Acts, chapter 10, verse forty-four. Book of Acts, chapter 10, verse four, I want this to happen, all of you, my dear. You know, when Peter, you know, he had a little faith issue, you know, he had a faith, great faith, and then he was distracted, and they started drown. He was doing the impossible thing, nobody can walk on water, have you seen some people, pastor? You know, you know, Pastor so-and-so believer, used to be so powerful, I don't know what happened, we all didn't know, distracted. Distracted. You see, amen? So that same Peter wants the anointing, you know, when you are filled with the Holy Spirit, God is all over you. Somebody say, the Spirit of God is upon me now, come on. Hallelujah, that, that's what happened this afternoon, right, amen, this morning? You have the Spirit of God inside you, but the Spirit of God is, that is upon you, my goodness, you're a warrior. The Spirit of God is God himself on you. You're no longer you, somebody say, I'm no longer me. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, are you with me now, I'm excited. So, while Peter was still speaking, these words, the Holy Spirit fell upon all those who heard the word. Somebody said, that is me. Now, hallelujah, I want to tell you, the Lord's anointing will grow such a measure over you. You will be just saying a small scripture that you know, that you have in the spirit. You start to speak it, what you have in the spirit, a one word, I have experimented with this. This one dear daughter, had a migraine headache for forty-three years, no medication can heal her. I said, in the name of Jesus, migraine leave. Of course, there is a root problem, generational curse, we gotta break it. It's gone. She called me after seven days, pastor's pain came back. This time I didn't even pray, I said, who is inside you? Jesus. Say again, you migraine headache, leave me now for good, never come back. She said to me, Pastor, it's gone. Called me after fifteen days, pastor never came back. Called me after thirty days, never came back. And after five months, she called me back and said, Pastor, it just came back. What did you do now? I said, what did you do? I think I opened the door, pastor. Again, I said, you are forgiven, my daughter, come on, you are forgiven, say it again. With authority, migraine leave me now. I made her say, by the stripes of Jesus, I'm healed. That's it, she is completely healed, no more migraines. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. So while I'm still speaking, something gonna happen. Something gonna happen in your spirit today. I'm gonna lay hands on you. There'll be an importation. And tomorrow is gonna be a fasting and importation. So fasting is called preparation for importation. Amen, hallelujah, you ready to fast tomorrow? Hallelujah. After the importation, we'll have a feast, okay pastor? Okay, okay, praise the Lord. So let me give you a quick point, then I'm going to go on, okay, quickly, quickly. So, number two, write you the number two, quickly, 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 quickly. Number one, God's word carries God's power. Number two, God's word carries God's life. So say with me, I have God's power with me, and I have God's life with me. Second Peter, chapter 1, verse 4. Second Peter, chapter, verse 4, NKJV translation. By which have been given to us exceedingly great and precious promises, that through these you may be partakers of the divine nature. Having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. Come on, somebody say, I'm a partaker of a divine nature. That, that's the secret, when you start to understand the truth of God, you can never lie. Just like God, God cannot lie, you cannot lie. God cannot sin, you cannot sin. People say, Pastor, I'm struggling with this sin, well, what's the problem? Scientific issue. Once you have the scientific issue, once you are sanctified here in the soul, and the glory comes upon you. See, glory is like this jacket, my dear. This is Pastor Samdahl, I said this. This is Lord himself. When the glory is on me, when the enemy wants to come into my head, come into my body, sickness he has to put in my body, either he has to mess with my mind. If I'm covered by God like this, the glory blanket, he has to first deal with God, right, come on? See, Romans, chapter 8, verse 31 says this. If God is for me, who can be against me? Let me say it this way, if God is over me, who can be against me? Galatians, chapter 3, verse 27 says, whoever is baptized in Christ Jesus, come on, they have put on? Christ, come on. Come on, realize now, say with me, I have, I have Christ over me. Come on, I have Christ over me. I have glory of God over me. I have a divine nature. I'm not going to all the scriptures, number three, number three, point number three, I just wanna take it. Number three, God's word carries God's wisdom. God's word carries God's power, God's word carries God's life, God's word carries God's wisdom. How many like to have wisdom? Come on, wisdom, 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 wisdom. You want it? Come on, let me see, how many want it? Now, thank you, thank you. How many already have it? Uh-huh. Come on, somebody give the Lord big praise. You know, you, you want to operate in the wisdom, can I tell you a secret today? Be conscious of it. See, you have it. How can you activate the blessing, we did a series on black to the blessing. All you gotta say, based on the word, oh, wisdom of God is inside me, by faith in the name of Jesus, I release it over my life right now. Every time I speak a word, wisdom is present, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. You say, every time I say something, oh, lots of wisdom is there, come on. It's already inside, you just have to use it. You have a car, fully fueled, you gotta start driving. You got to start to drive. You may have a car, if you don't know how to learn, how to drive, you can get nowhere. You'll always depending upon somebody's anointing. Somebody said, that's not me. I know how to drive. My father used to say, son, you gotta learn how to work the word, hallelujah. If you know how to work the word, you don't need anybody else, Holy Spirit already inside you. Yes, there is an importation, importation simply means somebody gives you a car as a gift. Come on, somebody. You didn't buy it. Are with me now? Somebody can buy a car, or somebody can receive a gift. So, importation simply means, you didn't work for it, somebody gave it to you, hallelujah, somebody, come on, say it. See, see, God's anointing is on me, now as a father, I can release it to you. And now you will release to somebody else. That is our story. Hallelujah. Okay, 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 I, I'm just gonna take couple more minutes, very, very small, very small. Second Timothy, chapter 3, verse 15. Second Timothy, chapter 3, verse 15. It carries God's wisdom, God's word, amen. And from childhood, you have known the holy scriptures, which are able to make you wise for salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus. Somebody give the Lord big praise. Psalm 19, verse 7, the law of the Lord is perfect, somebody say, perfect. Converting the soul, the testimony of the Lord is sure, making wise the simple. How many can say, I'm wise? I have the wisdom of God. I have the power of God. I have the life of God. Number four. Number four, number four, number four. God's, I, I have so many scriptures, but I just skip, I want to lay hands on you. Is it okay? Is it okay? Number four, God's word carries divine health. We're just reading the manual, that's all. God's word already inside of us, how many can say that, amen? We're just reading the benefit package. So, Proverbs, chapter 4, verse 20 to 22. My son, give attention to my words, somebody say, words. Incline your ear to my sayings, do not let them depart from your eyes, keep them in the midst of your heart. For they are life to those who find them, health through their flesh. This is our, this is a family, right pastor? I can be real with you, right? Why are we getting sick? Let's read again. My son, why God is calling us sons and daughters? Because you're a born again believer. You see? You say, Lord, heal me. Or you say, Lord, I'm so sorry. Allow the enemy to come into my body, but I'm gonna declare, 1st Peter 224, by the stripes of Jesus, I'm healed. How about you saying it, based on Job 2228, you decree a thing, so shall be? So shall it be established for you, so what are you gonna do? As anointed man of God, woman of God, something happened to the body, what are you gonna say? Based on 1st Peter 224, I am decreeing right now, by the stripes of Jesus, I am healed, hey body, be healed. Amen? It's okay in the process, you know, you had to take some medication, nothing wrong with it, you're not a sinner if you take medication. But ultimate goal is, you're not depending on medication anymore. You're in the process of getting rid of medications, amen? Nothing, thank God for doctors, they're helping people, amen? Hallelujah, you're not a sinner if you take medication. But ultimate goal is, you should not take medication, because medication have side effects. Yes or no? Come on, somebody. So, my son, give attention to my words, incline your ear to my sayings, do not let them depart from your eyes, that means you have to fix your eyes on the word of God. But the word of God is Jesus. When I, you know, looking unto Jesus, the author and the finisher of our faith, come on, somebody. What happens? The life of God will be transferring to you. You see? They always say in the Zoom meetings, please keep the cameras open, I wanna see your face, there is a transfer, power is transferring. I'm not kidding. This is real. They look at me, I look at them, miracle happens in their body. It is not me. The power of God going through my eyes. I prophesy to you, if you stare at me, I'm not kidding, I'm giving you permission to stare at me now. In America, that's a problem. My daughter, very small, when I was a little kid, we're in a mall, one guy was going like this, looking at her. She said, what's your problem, why are you staring at me, she was only four years old. So Rebecca has that problem. Back then, now she's good. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, I am giving you permission to stare at me. It is not me, it's Jesus. Somebody say, all the glory to Jesus. Hallelujah, come on, somebody. Hallelujah, let, let me read this, so if somebody is getting sick, what are they doing wrong? Based on the scripture. Verse 1, uh, verse 20, please. My son, my daughter, give attention to? Incline your to my sayings, verse 22, verse 22. What happens, for they are life to those who, and health to their flesh. Somebody say, put your hand on your chest. I'm healed by the stripes of Jesus. I am paying attention to God's word. So I decree and declare, no sickness in my body. In the name of Jesus. Come on, give the Lord big praise. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Can I give one more scripture? That is Psalm 107, verse 20. He sent his word and healed them, and delivered them from their destruction. You know, before, I used to go to crowds, sometimes some meetings that we had, by grace of God, some, some cities, some countries, each aisle will be fifty thousand people. My heart is, I usually, you know, stay with people and lay hands on them. Sometime we start 7 o'clock in the evening praying for people. Actually, 8, 8 o'clock because of worship and preaching. And by the time I'm done praying for people, some places in Guntur and Vijayavada, in Nilthu, Sumani area. By the time I'm done praying for people, it's like 6 or 7 in the morning. God gave me such a grace to stand on my feet and pray for every precious person. We're talking about some thousands. Their ministry became so big. Each aisle became 50,000 people. Can you believe that? So how do I do that now? I don't know what God said to me. I was praying. He showed the scripture to me. Psalm 107, verse 20. He sent his word. Then I was in Analogy Church in Chennai, India. Lord said, raise your hand like this. Whole aisle will be healed. That was new thing for me. I never, never had experience. I raised my hand. Lord told me. I said it. The first person jumped out of the crowd. She's a pediatrician, medical doctor. She ran to the stage and said to me, Pastor, I've been suffering with this problem for a long time. I had so many surgeries. I'm a doctor myself, but no remedy. Today, Lord, heal me. Come on, somebody, hallelujah. That never stopped. Somebody say, I have authority. I possess Rema word. I am going to send the word. Wherever I want that word to go, I will send it. I will send God's word. That word will not come back wild. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Hallelujah. How many of you understanding? I'm going to give you one more point, one more point. Can you stand with me as I finish this? Last point. God's word carries peace of God. The peace, shalom. I know somebody stressed out these days. They're not paying attention to the word that they possess. See? Shalom, peace simply means you have peace every area of your life. Shalom is, everything is blessed around you, my dear. And I love this, 3 John 1:2 says, as your soul prospers, everything should prosper and be in health. Amen? Where is our problem now in the soul? Uh, in our mind, in our will and emotion. Today, we'll be delivered from that. Tomorrow, as you come fasting, oh my goodness. God is going to do something amazing. But I still going to lay hands on you. So now, 2 Peter chapter 1, verse 2 says, grace and peace. Say with me, grace and peace will be multiplied to me now through the knowledge of God. Hallelujah. So now, Lord is going to key, give you peace. One more scripture, then we're going to pray. Isaiah 26, verse 3. Isaiah 26, verse 3. You will keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on you because he trusts in you. I want you to, I want you to see yourself. James talks about word of God is like a mirror. I'm not here to put anybody down. Please, look at yourself. So look at this. Who, you will keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is? If I'm not having perfect peace, what's happening, my dear? Tell me, what's my problem? My mind is not there. Hallelujah. Peace of God is in the word of God now. I'm not paying attention. Doesn't matter what's happening around you. You'll have peace. John's Gospel, chapter 16, verse 33 says, in this world you have lots of troubles, lot of issues in the world. But it's in me. What we have? Peace. We have good cheer. I have overcome the world. Where am I? Living inside you. Oh, come on, somebody. Come on, come on, come on, I'm going to close right now. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Are you ready to receive an importation? You know, I'm still going to pray for you. Tomorrow is going to be a big preparation and big transformation importation, okay? Hallelujah. Preparation, God's word will transform you. Today, just to encourage you. You know, a lot of people already told me what they receive it today. Something happened this morning meeting. Many people came to you and said, Pastor, this is what happened in my spirit. And I'm prophesying to you. Something great is about to happen to you right now. Because you have, you see, meditation, revelation, and manifestation. Hallelujah. Meditation, revelation, manifestation. Or you can say it this way. After this. Meditation gives you revelation, then you'll start a revolution. Come on, somebody, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Once you experience God in your life, will he be quiet? Uh, come on. Will he be quiet? When the Holy Spirit comes upon you, you will receive power. And then what, what happens to you? You'll be a witness. Amen? Come on, come on, come on, come on, everybody, close your eyes. Lord, I'm here to receive. Lord, I'm sorry. If I didn't pay attention to your word. I'm asking your forgiveness. According to 1 John 1:9. If I confess my sins, you are faithful and just to cleanse me from all unrighteousness. Thank you, Jesus, for forgiving me. Hallelujah. Now I'm not guilty. According to Romans 8:1. Come on, this is the time to jump, I'm not guilty. Hallelujah, come on, come on, come on, jump. Urakamabashikere. Oh, hallelujah, Rachel, can you come and sing Holy Spirit song? Continue it. Urakamabashandaridhaba. I'm going to lay hands again. I'm going to lay hands again. And I want you to receive an importation, my dear. But your part is preparation. You're going to say, Lord, I am forgiven now. Apostle Sam made me declare a scripture. You are faithful and just to cleanse me from all unrighteousness. So Lord God, now I'm a saint. Come on, somebody. I'm a saint, are you? Are you a saint, my dear? Oh, come on, somebody. Unless, unless you're still holding some sin. If anybody still have, you have unforgiveness in your heart, I'm so sorry. You can't experience the power of God. If you have a jealousy issue. You got to say, I'm sorry, Lord. I have your nature now. You know, sometimes, I make you say certain things about God's word. Anything that is not of God living inside you checks out. You know that? Say with me. I'm, I, I have, I'm a part taker. Come on, put your hand there. I'm a part taker of a divine nature. I have God's nature. I have God's heart. I have mind of Christ. My body is the temple of the Holy Spirit. From this moment onward, nobody can say, I'm a sinner. I'm a saint now. I'm a recipient of God's blessing. I am going to receive through importation, everything that God has instilled for me. In Jesus' name. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, thank you, Lord, we worship you. Come on, come on, come on. We're going to sing. Oh, ramabashikere, hallelujah. Urakamabashikere. Come on, come on. Those of you who need importation, come in the front line. Hallelujah. Why I ask that? Because when you walk here, you are being prepared. You are expecting. Hallelujah, come on. Pastor, if you can get me some oil. Urakamabashikere. Come, John. Oh.
Your presence, oh.
Urakamabashikere.
And I tasted and seen
Thank you, Lord.
All the sweetness of love.
Come on, come on, come in the front line. Urakamabashikere, everybody come. Those are expecting something from God, come.
Your presence.
Urakamabashikere. You know what happens when I lay hands on you? Not only importation, healing will take place. Carriages will take place. Urakamabashikere. Those of you are pain in your body, pain will disappear. Urakamabashikere. Urakamabashikere. Come on, lift up your hands, sit down. Already crowded.
And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence, oh. Oh, your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence.
Thank you, Jesus. Let us experience the glory of your goodness.
Oh, of your goodness. And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence, oh. Oh, your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. There's nothing worth more that will ever come close. No thing can compare your aliving, oh. Your presence. Your presence, oh. And I tasted and seen all the sweetness of love. When my heart becomes free and my shame is undone. In your presence. And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh.
Urakamabashikere. Hallelujah, these days, don't go anywhere. Urakamabashikere, preparation. Preparation needed. Anything that is not of God that is inside your soul, in your heart. Lord, I need an importation of God. Lord, I want feel your power over me, Lord. Cry out to God. If you have anything against people, let it go by God. Let it go. Urakamabashikere. Urakamabashikere. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. I see angels standing with certain people. Just like these Ashets are standing behind precious people. I see angels standing next to certain people, my goodness, my goodness. Urakamabashikere. Fire of God. On my hands. There's a fire in this hand. When the Lord touches you, it's not be touching. Hallelujah. It's not be touching. It's not be touching. Urakamabashikere.
Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Oh, your goodness. And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for, to be overcome by your presence. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Let us become more aware of your presence. Let us experience the glory of your goodness. Oh, your goodness. Oh, your goodness. You worship you, God, yeah. Oh, and I do, you worship you, God. And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Oh, yeah. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Cause we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence. Lord, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. It's your presence, oh. And I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart, oh. Cause I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart, oh, God. Yes, I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. Yes, I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. Lord, I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. Oh, how I love you. So how I love you.
So I want to quickly, quickly tell you what God is doing since we have declared tomorrow will be a day of deliverance. Every generational curse, every generational issue, and witchcraft and black magic, they are real stuff. And people put curses on you and you place a curse on you, you have to just miss the breakfast. That's good. Just come after the deliverance is over, then you're partitioned time. Amen? Probably gonna have lunch. So I'm noticing, uh, God is showing me certain things. And that will, that will not go unless you are saying, "Lord, I am entrusted in deliverance right now." I want to, that, that means you have to fast. You understand? Just one meal. Come here missing breakfast, okay? Don't eat. Come here straight. We'll have a lunch together, okay? So, so that's what I'm noticing. God is literally taking you to the next level. Amen? So I'm noticing, I, I prayed for four people. The Lord was showing me clearly. If I pray, the glory will come upon you, will not stay. Because under the cloud now, you still have to get enough certain things out. Hallelujah. But now, there are some people already prepared themselves. And you will receive it the moment I touch you, you will receive the fire of God. Amen? So we're not stopping. We're still gonna pray. Amen? Those of you, I'm gonna lay hands and pray. Hallelujah. Go ahead. Thank you.
I give you my worship. And all of my passion. I give you my whole heart. And all my devotion. And here I will bow down. Oh, and say that I need you. Cause here I will worship. Oh, and say that I love you. Yes, oh how I love you. Oh, how I love you. And oh how I love you. And so how I love you. And so how I love you. And oh how I love you. And oh how I love you. Oh, how I love you. Lord, I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart, oh. Yes, I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. Cause I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart, oh. And I want to know you and let your spirit overwhelm me. Let your presence overtake my heart. And we sing, Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence.
Praise Jesus. So Tim, Tim, Tim Wright, so where is Jesus? In my heart. In my heart, amen. Hallelujah. So you feel him in your heart? So who are you now? Child of the Most High God. Lift up your hands now. I'm gonna pray. Everybody stretch your hand toward him. Say, "Salah, right, Salah, to Jesus." Ora kamabash. Fire, fall down. Fire, fall down, come on.
On us we pray.
Fire!
As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray.
Come on, sing with us. Come on, let's go. Fire, Father, come on, lift up your hands and sing.
Fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. Cause I know that you're alive. Oh, you came to fix my broken life. That I'll sing to glorify your holy name, Jesus Christ. Cause I know that you're alive. Oh, you came to fix my broken life. That I'll sing to glorify your holy name, Jesus Christ. Cause I know that you're alive. Oh, you came to fix my broken life. That I'll sing to glorify your holy name, Jesus Christ. And as we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. And as we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. Show me your heart. Show me your way. Show me your glory. Show me your heart. Show me your way. Show me your glory. As we seek your. Show me your heart. Show me your way. Show me your glory. Show me your heart. Show me your way. Show me your glory. And as we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. Or as we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. Cause I know that you're alive. Oh, you came to fix my broken life. That I'll sing to glorify your holy name, Jesus Christ. Cause I know that you're alive. Oh, you came to fix my broken life. That I'll sing to glorify your holy name, Jesus Christ. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray. As we seek your fire, fall down. Your fire, fall down. On us we pray.
Anub, Anub. And this is? Anub. Lord healed Anub, but he says right now it's okay. Is that's the case? Say forever it's okay. Okay? Who healed your brother Anub? Jesus did. Come on, do it one more time. Do it one more time, brother. Come on. Hallelujah. It's a real workout. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Sister, say your name again. Lintu. This is, who is this? You sure? He had five years, sir. He's had, it's a back problem. Can you test him? Come, can you test him? Check, check him out. He's telling the truth? God healed him? Yeah? Yeah? Are you a runner too? Do you run? So only thing is when you bend, you, people have pain, right? Now you have no pain. Right? That's it. That's it, let's pray. Father, I just give you praise. Come on, everybody stretch your hand. Anub. From this moment onwards, Lord, for the rest of his life, he will not have back pain. Lord touch him. Ura kamabash. Fire of God, fall afresh. Fall afresh upon your soul. Thank you, Lord, for healing. Thank you, Lord, receive it, brother. Receive it. Lift up your hands to Jesus. Come on. Lord touch, Lord touch. From this day forth, no more back pain. Thank you, Lord. Use him, Lord. Come on, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Amen? And sister, come on, pray for you. Lintu, right? Lintu, and this is? Anitza? Wow, how old is this? How old is he? Four? Wow. Beautiful. Lintu, lift up your hands.
Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, Lord. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come flood this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory.